our community town hall meeting at 6:06. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Mr. Wallace, can you lead us?
Go ahead. You always do. That's your job.
All right.
Mayor Protem, ready?
I do get it. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members, please? Thank you. May be seated. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Wallace.
Present.
Mayor Protem Sammer.
Present.
Mayor Moran.
Present.
For the record, all councilmembers and mayor are in attendance.
Thank you. Council, are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none. Moving forward, at this time, also being part of the special meeting, we do have a section for citizen comments. We're still going to have an opportunity for citizen comments or questions later as well, but as part of the agenda, we do have a space for citizen comments. At a special meeting, members of the public wishing to address the council for any matter on the agenda may do so at this time. Under the provision of the California Government Code, the City Council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. Is there any citizen comments? Anyone on the phone? Hearing none, coming back into the chamber. Is there any citizen comments in the chamber for any, any items not in the agenda? Is there any citizen comments? Seeing none, closing the citizen comments at 6:09. So, for a while, it's been a while since we had a, actually, a town hall meeting. We had some other meetings and we had special meetings, but by the request of some councilmembers, we wanted it to have a, specifically, a town hall meeting where it was open for the community to also to be able to attend and provide comments, questions, and concerns, or anything related to, to what, what are some of the things that, where you want to see the city, whether it's questions specifically to any one department, or anything else. So, first of all, also, I want to, I want to thank everybody, everybody for being here. All of the departments are present. And so, what I would like to do is, oh, give it, give the mic to Mr. Ramirez and provide a little bit more information in regards to the town hall meeting, and then we can get it started.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council and Department Heads. So, today is one of those opportunities for the public, whether on phone or in person, to, basically, we can have informal question and answer opportunity. And again, it can be any of the departments. If we have the answer, we will certainly, you know, communicate it out today. If we don't, we will certainly bring that back. And what I also want to do today is, I would like each department, even if you don't have, even if the public does not ask you a specific question, this would be a good opportunity to kind of talk about what are some of the big ticket items that you're working on now and in the next few months, but also, what other questions or comments that some, that the public might have, you know, been sharing over the last few months. So that way, the public can get a good overview that maybe they have some of the same questions in those. So this is an opportunity to just kind of share. So, with that, we can certainly move from here, Mayor. Or any questions from staff in terms of the direction for this, for this evening? We're all pretty good? All right, we're good.
Is there a specific order, or?
Yeah.
Who you want to?
So, since we were waiting for some more folks to show up, but we can start. So, what I would like to do is, let me go ahead and get started with, with planning, given that there's been quite a bit of questions, especially because we will have a planning commission meeting coming up, I believe it's tomorrow. So there's going to be a lot that's going to be talked about as it relates to preferred alternatives. I know that there's a lot of property owners in this surrounding area that are, have been interested for a while and, and have been communicating that they want their parcels to be annexed into this city, to be included as part of this sphere of influence. And our department, along with the, the consultants, have actually put together some criteria and, and are going to talk about a number of different factors. So, if you would be so kind, Miguel, and,
Yes.
and, and talk a little bit about what's going to happen tomorrow and some of the aspects of what we're going to be looking at and the planning commissioners then will recommend to the council.
Thank you. Good evening again, representing the Plan Department, Miguel Galvez and Martha Abloh. The Community Development Department is actually made of three divisions, the Building Division, the Planning Division, and the Environment Engineering Division. When it comes to planning, as the City Manager alluded to, we have some significant items that are coming up. What I passed around right now, and actually, we can make some available, was a summary of some of the current activities that are taking place here with the, with the city. There should be enough copies for everyone. In any event, the important things that we've got going on right now, one is the general plan update, the other is the housing element update. Those are the two critical items that are important to the city, not only for the current, but also looking toward the future. The general plan update, that's actually, we're in the process of what we call looking at variety of build-out scenarios, alternatives. We have three alternatives we're going to be looking at, and these are being presented to the planning commission tomorrow. One alternative is, do we not grow? Do we just remain stable, static? No more growth, just kind of what we have is what, what we get. A second alternative is, do we just build out to the city limits? The existing city limits, there's vacant pieces of property. Some of those have been vacant because of a number of reasons, whether it's, you know, it's expensive to, to develop because you have to underground canals and things like that, or you got to put in substantial improvements. Another alternative is to go beyond, to kind of grow beyond our city limits. And that's where the planning commission and eventually the City Council are going to be looking at. What do they envision for the city? How should it grow? In which direction? How much growth should we take place? What's the density we're looking at for downtown? Should we focus more on, on growing up, or growing out, or a combination thereof? And these items will be discussed at the planning commission meeting tomorrow, tomorrow evening, at the seven o'clock planning commission meeting. They will be looking at all the options, and we're looking for them to provide a recommendation to the City Council of a preferred land use alternative. You know, one suggestion might be, should we grow all the way to the east to incorporate the Sultana interchange and kind of capture that and kind of make that under the city's sphere of influence, where we kind of have more land use control over that versus like the city of Atwater or the county? On the other hand, do we protect ag services, you know, ag agriculture operations? These are some of the issues that we want to look at tomorrow. So that's real important as part of the general plan update. There's two processes. Again, once we identify a preferred land use alternative, then that will go back to the consultants and they'll begin to really look, flesh out the general plan, all the elements. They'll identify what's the build-out population, what the environmental impacts will be from that, what's the circulation needs that we're going to need, what are the services that we're going to need to serve this, everything from new sewer, if possible, if needed, or sewer lines, water lines, storm ridge lines, additional roads. And then we'll be able to develop, what will this cost? And then we can begin to develop an impact fee that we can assess to new development. So really, this is an important part for the city as it focuses on is short and long-term growth. The current general plan is based off of 1999. And we had one that was adopted in 2008, but that got overturned. And so we're kind of having to restart. The other item that's significant is the, the housing element. The housing element, as you know, the state of California has made housing a, a goal for all residents within the state. Housing can take place, you know, it can be a rental unit, a single family, an ADU. Basically, there's not enough housing for all the residents in our community, in our county. And so the states are looking at projecting growth, and we have to accommodate that growth. And so we've prepared a housing element. The housing element has been referred to the state. We've gotten comments back. We replied to their comments. And at this stage of the review process, we are, we have received a second round of comments from the state Housing and Community Development Department. And now the consultant Rincon, they will, they will be responding to that. Rincon is actually doing a regional housing element. They're doing the housing elements of all the cities in Merced County. And so, they're focusing on like the regional housing needs, since it's a shared market, and at the same time, fine-tuning for each city. So for the most part, all the cities are getting similar comments. But in any event, that's a significant issue as we begin to address the need for providing housing to our working families and those that are not working. Those are some of the important things, long-term. Some of the short things that are taking place, you, as you drive along B Street, you probably see the apartments that are being built, the Tierra Santa Villas apartment project being developed by visionary home builders. We get lots of calls from people, even as far south as Los Angeles, hey, I want to register. I want to sign up for that. We get calls from people in the Bay Area. They want to participate in these affordable housing units. My understanding is they're going to do a lottery for that, and it's not going to be first come, first served. But we expect construction of that to be completed by 20, well, they told me by March 2026, but I suspect it'll be before then. I don't know exactly. They'll bring 80 units of affordable housing, two, three-bedroom units. The other project that we will see construction starting on is the Self-Help Enterprises project, which is just west of the Livingston Medical Facility. They're going to be pulling permits, I believe, this month. We have a couple little details to deal with in terms of fees and things like that, but they're ready to, to move forward. Their, that project consists of 80 units as well, onsite parking, a storm ridge basin. Each of these facilities, the Tierra Santa and the, this last one, River Glen, they incorporate a community center which has childcare, has meeting facilities, things like that for the community members, the, the people that reside in there. And so they bring a lot of, a lot of services to the people that will be residing there. And this is really exciting for us. I do get lots of people that come to the, to our office that say, you know what, I want to develop my property. And here in the planning department, we kind of, our mission is to help them reach their goal. We have a process for that. We'll tell them, here's what the rules are, here's the process. You have to go to the planning commission, and it might involve environmental review, eventually go to the City Council. And so we try to make sure we get air, all the departments input on it, so we can apply conditions of approval. So we have a number of applications. There's some that have been approved, and they're listed in the back here as some recently entitled planning applications. You know, there's the Quickway, there's the B Street Triplex, we have a number of these units, and then some that are in the, in the pipeline here. Anyway, that's just a quick overview. We deal with everything from business license, signed permits. We have meetings with prospective developers, applicants that want to divide the property. And we do the best we can to give them as much as information so we can give them, you know, an opportunity and instead to invest in the city of Livingston. Martha, is there anything you want to add?
No, you pretty much did everything. You did a great job.
Yeah, great job. Hey, if you could do me a favor, real quick, Miguel, and talk a little bit about, you know, that we're, we're looking at, I mean, we, our general plan, the minimum amount of elements is seven, and we're, we're actually looking at possibly incorporating some other elements. If you can talk a little bit about that. And then also talk about some of our, I guess you can call it midterm goals, and that is to revisit the, you know, update the planning fees, update the development impact fees. And I think that that will round out your department.
Yes. With our general plan, the state of California says that we have to incorporate seven required elements. The elements are the circulation element, which is traffic, the housing element, the safety element, the open space conservation element. That escaped me at the moment. Some of the, the additional ones that we're looking at is we want to incorporate an element that deals with the health and safety of our community through incorporating goals that deal with like developing park trails, exercising, really encourage a healthy lifestyle in our community. Not that we want to discourage vehicle traffic, but we want to encourage people to walk and kind of get to know each other. So it's a goal that deals with enhancing the quality of life through personal interactions, but more of a healthy lifestyle, everything from, you know, saying no to cigarette smoking for our youth, or alcohol consumption to our youth, to developing trails and things like that. So we want to incorporate goals and policies that deal with that. Another how, element that we want to incorporate is one that deals with the city's fiscal solvency. And that is, you know, does the city just want to grow with residential development, which is really very expensive for the city in providing those services? Or do we want to balance and encourage land uses that will help support the city's resources, financial resources, which are like businesses that bring in sales tax and things like that? So we want to have a fine balance, have an opportunity for people to, to have a good quality of life, but also generate, develop businesses that can generate additional revenue to help the city provide services like public safety and governmental services. So these are some of the goals that we're looking at, as some of the elements that we want to incorporate beyond those requirements. The other one that we can also incorporate, clearly we'll have some policies, is, is, you know, preservation of agricultural resources in our community. We might be able to reach out and say, you know what, you got some ag users in our community? We want to protect those. There's some vacant properties in our community. And, you know, do we want them to sit idle, or do we want to encourage people to farm them? You know, it makes sense to, to make that. And that will help us address the whole issue of ag preservation. We're not just necessarily growing, but we're adopting policies or recommending policies that will help us govern how those will be managed within the city limits.
Yeah. And again, all of these are just opportunities for the public, for the planning commissioners and the council, to look at all these things and then ultimately push out what that final general plan is going to look like. But these are just some topics that, that staff is throwing out for council and public and planning commission to consider.
The other thing I want to mention, as, as the City Manager requests, it has to do with our impact fees, our planning application fees. Our planning application fees have not been updated in, in many years. I don't want to say how many. We charge a nominal amount compared to other jurisdictions in the area. For the most part, the costs that are incurred by contracted staff, meaning planning staff and the engineering staff are recouped. But some of the staff that are involved with preparing the, the staff reports, everyone from Martha's position, maybe the, the city clerk, the city manager, the city engineer, those costs are not incurred. So we want to look at updating our, our development impact fees. The other thing has to do with, I say impact fees, but just our, our staff fees. But the other thing that we wanted to do is, once we have a comprehensive general plan update, it'll tell us, if you will, what our overall build-out will be and kind of, we'll be able to determine what associated costs are for the build-out of the city. And that will help us identify new impact fees and help us develop a capital improvement program that we can look at funding, you know, every, every five years or, you know, we have a five-year CIP program where every year, we, we want to make sure we can look at building something that benefits for the whole city. And we're able to do this once we have a adopted general plan. That will help us meet our AB 1600 requirements that justify the, the nexus of the, what the connection that the fee is fair and adequate for, based on the impacts that will have on the city. And that will help the city overall. I think it'll, it's somewhere where we need to be, somewhere that we want to help the city achieve.
Thank you very much. Of course, there is going to be, in certain occasions, where there's going to be a little bit of overlap because the departments don't work in silos. They work, we all work together. And so, one piece that And so one piece that tied to the general plan has to do with the infrastructure master plans that engineering works with, and they'll talk about that later, but just wanted to make the connection here. I guess this is a good opportunity to, Mayor, to allow the public to ask questions. We'll do it per department. That way, people don't forget.
Yes, thank you. So at this time, I will check in with the, is there anyone on the phone that might have any questions in regards to what information was just shared for the building department? Anyone on the phone? Bringing it back to the chambers, is there any questions or comments in the chambers? Please step forward.
Diego Castillo, I just had a comment. I was at a town hall meeting that City of Modesto put together a couple weeks ago. And before the, the, most cities and counties thought that residential did not bring taxes like commercial does. But one of the slides there, and I can, I can share it to the city council manager to review, is now with a lot of these orders being placed online for, you know, just about everything, there's a significant amount of sales tax that are created from residential use, which was not typical of, you know, 10, 20 years ago. But now you, traditionally, you would think most of the sales, most of the sales tax would come from a storefront, but now you're, you're having a shift where a good portion of our, you know, stuff from whether it be any of the big box stores or, you know, Amazon, Target. So I'm not sure what agreement or how that sales tax would be distributed to the city, but that might be something to look at because as we get new housing to come in, and as we get more of these housing units that order online, that is an additional revenue source for the city via sales tax as well. That's it, thank you.
Great question, by the way, and comment, just a little bit about that, and then if Happy wants to jump in. So there is a pool, and, and so as part of that sales tax pool, they, there's a proportionate share that's given to each city because if you order online, they have to actually collect the tech, the tax, and then they'll send it to the county, and then the county does their magic, and then they, they punch out a certain amount for each city. Did you want to add anything else? Nope? All right.
And then one last comment on the planning side. I think it's important to keep up with your impact fees and make adjustments as, as needed for the city. I just caution the, the city to, to think that some of the comments that were made in the past are like, oh, you know, we're going to increase our fees because the developer pays for them, or the, you know, X, Y, and Z. But the, the truth is, if you do impacts like some of the other cities that are very, very high, you, you limit affordable housing. Because if you have to pay, let's say, 70, 80, 80,000 in impact fees before you build a single family, there's no way you can keep that house under 600,000. So just keep, keep that in mind. I think it is.
Balanced approach.
I, I think it is appropriate to do an increase in the fees, but make sure it's, it's something that's in range with, with our community and that you're not, you don't take the approach as some of the other cities that says, oh, we're going to raise the fees to X because the developer pays for them. But whether it's a rental unit, or whether it's a unit that gets built to end user, like a single family, the reality is, yes, the developer pays for them upfront, but whether it be the tenant or the homeowner is the one that ends up paying that bill.
Thank you. Is there any additional comments in the chamber?
Hi, good evening, council. My name is Lisa Mantaro-Moore. I'm representing Congressman Adam Gray this evening. He couldn't be here, but we appreciate the invitation and opportunity to come to Livingston tonight. And just wanted to say here, receiving information presented by the council, the community members and your staff, and looking forward to how we can be good partners for you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Rodrigo Espinoza. Well, just as Miguel was using, was explaining about, you know, the fair share, or to make sure that, that, you know, homes are going to be using a lot of, a lot of services, especially with police services and other services as well. I think that we, we need to make sure as a council that, you know, you guys, that, that make sure that on the planning side and the general plan, that we have enough commercial, enough industrial. That's what I always pushed in the county, is that we prioritize industrial space and commercial space because that's what's going to bring in the jobs and the revenue to the city. Because, you know, the homes are going to come in, apartments are going to come in, and, you know, they, they bring a revenue, but sometimes it's not enough to provide the services. So that's why I stress to the council that, to make sure that we, we get that industrial space, you know, and that's what I pushed in the county on the north side, on the east side, and everywhere I went, but, you know, but I, you know, it seems like I, I was talking to deaf ears, but for us, for this city, I think that's what we'll bring eventually the, you know, as we grow a little bit more. You know, I don't want a big general plan, it's just enough that we get enough revenue for our city, so thank you.
Is there any additional comments in the chamber at this time? All right, so seeing none.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Before we move forward to the next department, if it's okay, I did want to thank a couple of the individuals that came out tonight. We're going to end up going down line by line, and I wanted to do this before they end up leaving before the end of the night. So first of all, Ms. Lisa already came up from Congressman Gray's office. Thank you very much for being here, taking time out of your schedule. A few other folks that I invited that showed up. Alexandra Rizzo from Assemblywoman Soria's office is here. Thank you for being here. Next to her is Alberto Rios from External Relations at UC Merced. And then behind them, gentleman in the pink, that's Joe Ballis with the Office of Ana Caballero. Wanted to get them out here tonight, you know, if there was more turnout. A lot of times, folks have questions that are out of our jurisdiction, and so if there are any state or federal issues that came up, I asked our state and federal folks to come out to address them. I just want to say, really appreciate that you guys came out to Livingston tonight, took time out of your schedules, and I don't expect you to be here for the entire night, so I wanted to thank you before you left. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing, excuse me, I've been asking this for years, and maybe we can put new life into it, is throughout the city, especially older parts of town, we have some empty lots that have been vacant for years and years. Is it possible? And, and Diego made a good point, and I'm sorry, but some of it is preventing those folks from building is the fees themselves, or because there are some other infrastructure that has to be moved on, you know, it becomes cost prohibitive. Is one thing, I mean, we see them all over the town, everybody knows where they're at. Is there a way, a possibility of something, I don't know if the feds got anything or the state, but something we can attach to, to help offset some of those fees to get those lots infilled? You know, because infill, lots that are empty get filled, take up the new land, the roads are already there, water and sewer is already there. You know, there is some savings in there, but, but when you have to underground a power line, that's, that could be almost half the price of the house. So I was wondering if we can address the staff to look into, see what may be possible? And I've been trying this for years, but maybe we can bring some, breathe new life into it. So unless you already know something, Miguel or Martha, but I think that might be something worth researching.
No, absolutely. Thank you very much for bringing that up, especially some of the smaller lots that we have here in, in the downtown. If somehow we can come up with some incentives, whether that means, and there's different creative ways to, to make that happen. You know, you have a very small lot right here in downtown, maybe to make that pencil out, it might need to be a mixed use opportunity for somebody. So you have retail at the bottom and then probably living quarters on top so that the numbers add. I mean, that's one possibility. Other is, is, is to, you know, give a special incentive and reduce the cost so that somebody, you know, builds there. So there's different approaches, but we, yeah, we'll, we'll look at that. And then as it relates to bigger projects, where you do have undergrounding of, of different canals and things of that nature, there, there's also a number of different other programs, and we're going to have to dig into that a little further.
Yeah, it's a shame that some years ago, the state decided to dissolve and do it with RDAs, redevelopment agencies. They were an excellent tool to make this happen, but unfortunately, this is the new reality, and I think we need to figure out a way to deal with it. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to, well, first of all, thank all the, the different representatives that are here representing the different legislative offices. I do have a, you know, a question for either Ana Caballero or Esmeralda Soria's. We're very grateful that we were, we actually received, you know, a grant from the state for about $27 million. However, given the different dynamics that are happening at the federal level, we don't know, we're not quite comfortable with whether or not there's going to be some impact to that money, because it's not like we're spending it today. And so we, I sent out an email to, to the State Department of Water Resources and asked that specific question. But if, if our representatives can also ask, that would be wonderful. So again, once it hits the state coffers, is it already washed and it's state money? Or does it still continue to be federal money? So that's the question.
I don't have an answer, and I'm not going to claim to have one, but yeah. Again, thank you, council and mayor for having me here, Joe Ballis. Senator Ana Caballero is a great partner up in Sacramento for the city of Livingston. I will get that comment. And I do know with some grants, that if there's not a drawdown, there is some concern that the money might be pulled back. But I'm not sure on specific requirements and grants, but some of the conversations been that if there's not use of that fund within a certain timeframe, it could be at risk of losing the funding. But for that specific earmark funding, let's get you an answer.
Thank you.
Can I address you?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, the reason I asked my question about infill was not just for staff. We have representatives from the feds and the state, so hopefully they'll also see if there's an answer for us somewhere, you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, is there any other questions on the dais at this time? Need to know. All right, so let's.
Yeah, we'll move on. Thank you very much. Again, I guess since it's, there's a lot of nexus, since we talked about master plans and stuff, I guess we can jump into engineering. So either Mario or Danny. And of course, engineering works, transportation, streets, you know, infrastructure. So wherever you guys want to start, and just a little overview of, of the department and some of the big ticket items that are currently in the mix, and then kind of our future outline. You guys did a wonderful job this last council meeting, but we're going to open it back up.
Right. Thank you. I'll, I'll try to do a summary of what we presented a week ago, I think it was, which was very, I think, pretty comprehensive of what the engineering department duties are. I'm, I'm going to focus basically on two large groups of services that we provide. The first one being infrastructure and capital projects, so capitals that, projects are actually city projects. And then the other, the other point is city engineering and private development. So under the infrastructure, at this point, we have a lot of the water projects where, I know it's been talked about a lot, and I'll touch on that or focus on that. There's also sewer and storm. I may skip that because it's, maybe the public works director can touch on that. There's transportation. I'll let Danny will address those. In terms of the city engineering development, there's the private development projects that we have to review and approve, and then there's a number of other engineering activities. So having said that, I will jump onto the water project work plan that the city presently has.
We do have a slide, Mario, so we're going to, we're going to pull it up.
Oh. That's, great.
You just tell us which one.
Yeah, you can go to slide eight, if you would. There you go. So that's the water project work plan. Those are all, all in place, all these are all in place except for the last two, which are master plans, and I'll talk a little bit about that also. But one, two, three, four, five, six.
Can you, can you reference the, the, the?
Yes.
The 27 million, given that Mr. Ballis?
Let me get my trusty laser here. So this first.
We can send that slide to you if you like.
I will.
We will send it to you.
Follow to me a slide.
Yeah, we will, okay?
Yeah, so this first one is actually under construction, is well 8A. And it is about halfway done. It's being constructed, should be done here at the end of this calendar year, early next calendar year. So that's a well that's going to also be treated for some of the issues that city has Well 18 is a well that's just starting now, the test well has been done. It is funded with this million dollars that actually came from some help from Senator Caballero. And then some of these other funds are city funds. The well 19 is in the works, but it's kind of on hold now pending a number of issues with siding and funding that, which are obviously very important. That will be a, a well with wellhead treatment, meaning that it will require treatment, it will be treated at the well site. I'll go back to this one here. Well 18 will also require treatment. It'll go to a centralized plant, plant. The city will end up with three centralized plant, plants. At this time, it has two in operation, one of which is going to be expanded to accommodate a couple of other wells, 18 being one of them.
So Mr. Ballis, just real quick, if you look at the fiscal years, you know, the PE is basically stands for preliminary engineering, CON's for construction, of course, bid is bid, and the final construction.
This might, this might qualify, like as far as what the state wants to see as like an action plan, so again, when it comes to like state earmark funding, there are some concerns with the budget. And so if there's a work plan already in place and a target date, and you've used some of the funds here for like design, or that's usually a good sign that they won't interrupt or take that away. It's if you don't have a plan, or if you're not kind of showing.
Yeah, and we're in constant contact with, with our reps in the Department of Water Resources. But again, you know, a lot of uncertainty is happening at the federal level. We just want to just make sure, because yes, we've already expended lots of funds, we're already doing the preliminary engineering, and then, you know, we're going to be going into the bidding process, and we want to make sure the funds are there.
Yeah, I'll elaborate on, this is obviously the largest one that we have here. It's two, two treatment plants, there's face two, a face. So it is SRF funded. There, we're just waiting for a funding agreement, so the design is way far along. I don't want to go through all the packages for the applications and all of that, but it is very complex, as some of us know. And so at this point, we're expecting a funding agreement, according to the last meeting that we held, had with the, the state early 2026. So it is well in place, and it's been worked with the state for a long time. Well, this one here, well 8A arsenic treatment plant, that is, again, it's a treat, a treatment plant to, will be included in one of these other treatment plants. It will treat, this one will be specific for arsenic, it'll be at the well 8A's site. It is a city funded. So it will actually be constructed at the same time that this one is going to be constructed. Ice Street Waterline is a small project, was actually just bid, and it'll be constructed here in next couple of months. So when you put these together, these here, you have $50 million in works right now. So the two at the bottom here, that's a water master plan that, and I'll just dovetail into what Miguel mentioned about general plan, which is correct. General plan needs to be in place, and the city should have an AB 1600 in place, and then the master plans would come next, and you should have at least a water, a sewer, and a storm master plan. Sometimes you have streets and other ones, but those are the three main ones. Sometimes you have streets and other ones, but those are the three main ones. And this is, since we're talking about water, this is about, and this is the water one. It is unfunded at this time. We expect that it'll run about $200,000. Along with those is the updating of the water infrastructure map, that the city has an old one that has not been updated for lack of funding, and they'll take probably $100,000 to do that. So as of now, the city has a work plan for water of $50 million. And that's within the next four fiscal years. You have this two here.
All right, I guess we can jump over to...
I'll be glad to answer questions if you haven't, if anybody has any at this point, or I can move on to something else, because if I keep talking, it will be a long time.
So Mario, you know, just for informational purposes, for the people that are watching, and for the people that will be watching this later, so here's just an example of some of the projects that are going to be, are being worked on for the next four years, or that have been on the works for '24, '25, '25, '26, '26, '27, and '27, '28. Prior to this, you know, like for instance, some of the projects that have been on the works for, since up here, '24, '25, how long have they been really on the works by staff? Because, just to give an example, and then you can use this example, like the water infrastructure, but also, I think it's very important, because I get a lot of inquiries about sidewalks and streets and street repairs and alley repairs and, you know, and sometimes it seems like things are expected to get done, like, you know, within the next couple of months. Can you provide a little bit more...
Yes, yeah, I'll provide some context on that. For instance, well 8A will be, will end up being a replacement for well 8. That's been in the works for several years, probably three years or so. Well number 18 has been, look, that's for probably four years now. It's at a new site now because of some negotiations with the prior site that did not conclude. Well 19 has been probably in the works for like five years or so. And that's the one here that it's the most, the one that's iffy, because the funds are not secured. This is potential for SRF. Again, there's a number of things that need to be negotiated with that, for that one to occur. This one here has been on the works since 2018. And that's the one, this project used to be $42 million, because it included two wells. And then the program that the state had for these, and they had already said, yeah, we'll go ahead with that, but then they backtracked the wells and removed those. So it went from $42 million to $27 million. That was to do, the wells were, well 18 and well 19, so those were removed. So I hope that gives you a little bit of context and timelines on, yeah, these take a long time to get them.
How about streets, requests, sidewalks, and alleys? I think those are some of the things that I get inquiries about a lot, but I guess that could also be covered by...
Yeah, I'll let Danny do that. I don't know if you, I have a little more, I don't know if you want to keep going on this water stuff.
No, no, let's go to Danny.
We'll jump to the street. There you go.
Thank you.
I'll jump to the transportation work plan that we have in place right now, and I'll address some of your questions, Mr. Mayor, as far as timeline and things like that go. Can you...
Can you, yeah.
Sorry. Okay.
I don't know. No, it's off.
Can you hear me now?
No.
No?
You can hear me.
There you go. Okay, so this is from our presentation. This is our transportation work plan. There are a number of funding mechanisms that the city uses to fund different transportation projects. Each funding mechanism is different, as far as its requirements and its limitations Until Measure V was made available to the cities, one of the primary sources for funding was CMAC funds, which is congestion mitigation funds. That's a federally funded component that runs through MCA-G, and involves Caltrans approvals and things of that nature, as you go through the process to obligate funds and get the project to construction.
Let me just chime in, MCA, there's a lot of acronyms that we talk. MCA is Merced County Association of Governments. They manage various sorts of funds. Most of these funds that we use for streets are actually federal funds that get routed through Caltrans and managed through the, what they call the local assistance department of Caltrans, that then deals with the COGS, and that's where these programs are, CMAC, STBG, HTP, all of those.
So over the past few years, you've seen a number of projects get constructed, such as the downtown roundabout. That was CMAC money. Some of the paving of alleyways was also done with CMAC money, and also some sidewalk infill projects in the Davis area on the north end of, on the north side of 99. One of the things that you'll notice on the screen right now is there's a number of CMAC projects that are currently in design, and there's a couple that will be actually bid this summer. The Max Foster Phase 1 and Phase 2 multi-use path that runs along Walnut and down Dwight into the, into the park, that will be constructed, you'll start to see construction this summer. So that's one of the more significant projects that we have that's about to go out to bid. Some of the other projects that show up on the list are Livingston pedestrian improvements. Those are a sidewalk infill project. And then also, the sidewalk improvements on Stefani and Jay, that's also an infill sidewalk project that the city received funding on.
Hey Danny, this would be a good point, a good opportunity to share a little bit about how this, the initiation of, you know, from the project identified the need, then how we have to work, do a little bit of chess with, you know, MCA-G and the requirements. And then ultimately, you know, you guys get a work order, and then we get to this point, if you cover the whole thing.
So the process for CMAC is, MCA-G will initiate a call for projects, and that call for projects is answered by the city through a number of different avenues. What typically happens is the criteria for CMAC is looked at, because it changes from time to time as far as some of the requirements. For instance, with the last call for projects, it was much more difficult to try and go after a project to pave an alleyway. So the city looked at other alternatives, such as sidewalk infill projects, which is one of the reasons why Stefani and Jay Street was looked at. So we prioritized what we could based on the funding criteria, and then presented that to council as possible projects to be submitted for funding consideration. Council gave direction to proceed forward with the projects that were listed. Those were submitted, and then they were evaluated by MCA-G staff, and also other jurisdictions. All the projects that were submitted for the city were awarded funding, and assets show up on the list there. Now, once you've received funding, then your program then to what they call the F-TIP, which is basically the master list of all the projects within MCA-G's inventory, that, and they're listed for certain year timeframes as when they, certain phases can be programmed. So once we're, once we're on the F-TIP, and we can move forward with PE, we will then obligate the funds for PE, given whichever federal fiscal year those funds show up in. In some cases, if we're ready ahead of time, we try to expedite those funds if they're, if that option is made available. Then as we move through PE, we also have to do environmental clearance. Since CMAC is a federally funded program, we have to get NEPA clearance, and those reviews go through District 10 Caltrans. Once we've gotten NEPA clearance, we then start final design. Those improvements are designed, and a bid package is put together. We then go through a process called right-of-way clearance, where we verify that the city has control of the right-of-way, and that there are no utility relocations that are necessary to go through a specific process. Once we get that right-of-way clearance, we can then look at putting in for construction funds. Once we obligate construction funds, which requires a review by Caltrans Local Assistance to review the project plans and contract documents, and then they put it through their process, and then we obligate funds, we receive confirmation obligation, and then at that point, we can start looking at putting things out to bid. Once it goes out to bid, then it goes through the process of pre-construction meeting, letting the public know that it's going to go into construction, and then construction activities start. Depending upon the type of project, the timeframes for construction vary. And then once, once construction has been completed, then we go through a project closeout, which requires us to basically balance the books on a project, and make sure that all the federal funds are utilized, and then we close out the project.
Let me make just one side note, specifically on CMAC and sidewalks, because sidewalks are very popular, you know, people want sidewalks. One of the main requirements for CMAC for sidewalks is you cannot redo existing sidewalks. You have to do sidewalks where there's no sidewalks. So that's, makes it somewhat challenging. So that's a very important thing, because a lot of people, oh, my sidewalks look terrible, let's redo these, and you cannot redo those with CMAC funding.
Thank you. So this is a good opportunity now to ask questions for the...
So checking in to see if there's any questions on the phone, in regards to the area that we just covered. Here and now, I'm bringing it back to the chamber. Any questions in the chamber? All right, so bringing it back to the dais. So, Council, anything? And in regards to, for instance, broken sidewalks, funding has to be, and I think you already share, can I use any of this funding? Whether if it's broken, if it's...
If it's existing...
He talked about CMAC.
CMAC only.
There's Measure V funds, there's...
You can use measure money or your own funds, yeah, but just for the CMAC, it's a peculiar requirement of that program.
All right, I guess I'll wait also for some of the other questions for Anthony. But anything else for Danny?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One question. Danny, you were explaining the process from being awarded funds, and there were a number of steps before we even got to being able to go to bid. A lot of times, we hear about things getting done in the public sector, they take too long because we're too slow, some of it is just bureaucratic inefficiency, or a lot of steps that we have to move through. And I'm curious to know, in your opinion, how many of those steps do you feel are legitimate to ensure that things are done properly, safely, plans are proper, versus it just has to go to somebody else's desk, because it has to go to somebody else's desk?
I don't know that it's just that it has to go to someone else's desk. I don't believe there's anything like that involved in this. For CMAC specifically, CMAC, STBG, ATP, there's a process. The federal process requires certain checks and balances to be done, and those are the checks and balances that we follow in order to move from the PE phase into construction. You know, some of those are environmental clearance. Right-of-way clearance, there are a number of these steps that if they were skipped, there's potential hazards that could, could show up. For instance, with right-of-way clearance, if you, if you skip that step, you may not be addressing the utility relocation that may be required, or something of that nature. So it's part of the checks and balances process.
And yeah, it would go a lot faster if it's private work, but, and I'll stay with, say, CMAC. With a program like that, you have the, you know, in our case, MCA-G is involved with that, then you have Caltrans, Caltrans Local Assistance, and then you have FHWA, which is the feds, federal highway. So you have a number of agencies. And so you have to go through the process, which is time-consuming, and sometimes the reviews that we think, oh, and even the agencies say, I'll take a couple of weeks, and it'll be like two months, four months. So it's really not something that we have a lot of control over. You just have to go with what it is. I guess the flip side of that is when you get one of these projects funded, you normally get about 90% grant and 10% of the city participation. Some of them, you get lucky, it's 100.
Yeah, well, you know, let me just share, and this is, you know, having had a lot of experience on the, on the private sector and the public sector, I can tell you that if I was governor tomorrow, I would, you know, re-blow up Caltrans and re, you know, start them up, and then followed by PG&E, and then you just go down the list. Unfortunately, that's, you know, what we're dealing with today, and because we have to meet, there's a lot of little boxes we have to check. Now, that doesn't mean that myself doesn't get involved, or elected officials get involved to push some of these agencies. We can't do it directly, but we can do it with our representatives. So kind of what we're doing now with, you know, the SRF application, and so sometimes there's movement, and other times there's no movement, but we have to follow each of the steps, otherwise we jeopardize, you know, the project.
Right.
Just in context a little bit, some of these projects, even if it's a city-funded project, you still have to meet, you know, contract code and all of that, all of those things. And we'll say, one of these projects may take, for our records, maybe a couple of four-inch binders, so a couple of binders like that. One of these projects, if it's, if you have Caltrans and FHWA involved, and especially if it's in a state route, you end up probably with 20 binders. So that's the difference in magnitude of this, and time, and the time that it, some of the simpler projects may take a couple of years. Some of these other ones take five, 10 years.
Right. And the reason why I ask is because, you know, if we're saying, you know, similar to you, I have opinions about the PG&Es of the world. We can only control what we can control on our end, but if there are just, for say, state agencies that are taking two months longer than they're supposed to be, we should have a way to address that, right? And I think us as a council, we have kind of a political immunity that staff don't always have, and I think it's up to us to push those concerns forward. I've been very active with Calcity's folks for the last couple of weeks, trying to get tapped into what they're doing, learning about their positions, and being able to push that stuff forward. And so, the reason why I ask is, I can't help if I don't know. And even if that inconsistency continues over time, at the very least, if we're aware of it, I feel like it's up to us to step up, say something about it, address those inefficiencies, and get things moving forward.
Yeah, and the city has liaisons with all of these agencies, PG&E has a liaison that anyone from the city can contact, and hopefully they can make things a little, I guess, less painful. But it, you know, it's still a very lengthy and trying process for the most part.
So, thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Ballas. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Wallace.
I like the last two slides, but can you bring the other one right back? Or one of them just a little bit bigger for me, when you get old here?
Which?
Any one of the slides, the last two, they add up.
The last two?
Either one of them, that has the 20, that started with the 24, 25.
Okay, well, let's see.
I think it was eight or nine, whichever one. Any one of them had the figures in.
I think Monica's gonna bring...
Keep going. There you go.
This one? Yes, yes.
My quick question would be, could we add, or I don't even know if it's worthwhile, but for the average person sitting at home, listening or watching, we're gonna review it later, whatever, because there's hardly anybody here, but if we added the date before the 2025, say, the first time that hit the city's desk, because then that's the bureaucracy that's involved in these steps. Right now, if I'm looking at home, you started working on well number 8A, 2425. Well, in fact, we did not start working on it in 2425. We started on it years ago.
Years ago, yeah, it's in construction now.
But does the public know that? That's what I'm saying. If we added that other column in there, it would make it easier to say, "This is when we started as a city. We've been working with the government from this agency to this agency from this date, and this is where we are now." Just a thought to think about, that's my perception of it.
Yeah, and we can do that for future presentations, how long these have been in the works.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, council, anything else? If not, before, so let's just go ahead and move on with...
Yes, the next department.
Public Works.
Want me to skip the city engineering part of it?
I think so.
Because that's a lot of stuff, too. I can skip it if you'd like, but there's a whole bunch of other stuff.
We're good.
You're good?
Yeah, we're good. Yeah, you did a great job to the last council meeting. Okay, so, Anthony, Public Works?
Good evening, council, members of the public. Anthony Chavertier, Public Works. I'll be providing a high-altitude flyover of the responsibilities of Public Works. Public Works is responsible for the following areas. First one being parks in the LMD Department, which is Landscape Maintenance Districts. Our parks, the staff takes care of irrigation repair, mowing, trimming, fertilizer application. In our LMDs, that staff, the same staff, takes care of 26 different Landscape Maintenance Districts. That's a lot of irrigation repair and a lot of vegetation trimming. We do have three full-time employees in that department, as well as five part-time employees in that department. The second department, our Operations Department, which consists of water treatment and conveyance and wastewater treatment and conveyance. What does wastewater treatment conveyance look like? That's their sewer line cleaning. That's what gets your wastewater from your home through town, underground piping network, all the way to the wastewater treatment plant where it's treated. Operations staff's responsible for keeping those lines clear and flowing, which is a lot of work. We just recently purchased a new Vacon machine to assist staff in cleaning out the lines and wood blocks lines, grease buildup, fog, we call them fog, fast oils and grease. So we want to ask our residents not to pour grease down the drainage. We want to throw that outside in the garbage.
Cheese balls.
What else? Roots, roots cause blockages as well. Water Department, same. Our Operations Department takes care of our water treatment. Our water treatment consists of nine well sites for our treatment sites that treat iron, manganese, and arsenic, as well as TCP at two of the treatment sites, which are at well eight and well 16 currently. That same staff is also responsible for storm pump station maintenance and sewer lift station maintenance. We have nine pump stations at our storm drain maintenance site and our sewer pump stations. Each of those pump stations have two to four submersible pumps, electrical controls that staff have to maintain and keep operational. We have five full-time employees in the Operations Department and one manager to maintain the water and sewer operations of the city. Another department that we're responsible for is Fleet. Our Fleet Department is comprised of maintenance on our police department vehicles, fire department vehicles, as well as our Public Works equipment and vehicle maintenance. We have two full-time employees in that department. Another department is our Streets and Building Maintenance Department. The department's responsible for potholes, slurry sill projects, repave projects, road striping, crack sealing projects, a lot of our Measure V projects. Public Works does work closely with engineering as it relates to water treatment and wastewater Now, I went over the different departments that Public Works is responsible, and I did want to go over a couple of projects that have recently been completed and a few more projects that are in the works for next fiscal year. So we did recently complete the playground structure at Arkellian Park. That was a $125,000 project. It was funded from CFD, Park Impact Improvements. That has been completed. For next fiscal year, we do have in the budget for a new playground installation at Max Foster Park, pending council approval. And that is for next fiscal year. We also do have, for next fiscal year, construction. This is already taking place. That is the Arkellian restroom renovation project. So there'll be, the existing Arkellian restroom will be demolished, knocked down, and we will be building a new restroom there at Arkellian, which will mirror Joseph Gallo restroom block wall.
Anthony, if you can talk a little bit about the water conservation campaign efforts that were, you know, going to be communicating to the public, and then also the fact that we have to bring the council in ordinance, as it relates to being able to enforce, you know, water conservation efforts?
Yeah, no, that's great. So we are starting a water conservation campaign, which is already started. Residents should have received a flyer in the utility billing just to remind them of their watering days and water conservation tips. We'll be sending out a water conservation flyer in the utility billing for an additional two months. Also, we plan on working with our PD, our Code Enforcement, and knocking on doors and educating the public as well when we see wasteful watering, overwatering. And as we move forward, there is additional language in our municipal code that we need to add in. We currently do not have the ability to fine residents for wasteful watering, for overwatering. So that's something that staff will be working on.
The reason we were able to do that in the past is because of the executive order that the governor had forward, but once that moved away, that's why we have to update.
Couple more projects that I did want to highlight that was recently completed were the two pulverizing overlay projects that just recently completed, like a couple of weeks ago?
Yes.
That is the repave of 4th Street from Park to F Street, and about a 500-foot section of Main Street, right before you get to Newcastle, right in front of Newcastle Apartments. There's a really bad piece of Main Street there that was falling apart. Another project on the next '25, '26 budget year, we're planning to pulverize and overlay Main Street from D to I, I believe it is, D to I, but that is pending council approval as well. And the storm lift stations, pump stations, another project that was recently completed was the East Avenue Storm Pump Station. That was one of our really older pump stations that has been completed, I don't know, guys, about three, four months, three months ago or so. That was a $250,000 project, paid through our, by our Sewer Enterprise Fund. We do have a couple more lift station improvement projects in our infrastructure work plan. That's it for the projects. I also did want to remind our residents that to feel free to call Public Works to report potholes, discolored water, pressure issues, park maintenance issues, any issues that we see out in the public, feel free to call us and let us know what you're seeing out there. You know, we can't be everywhere, and we do rely on our residents to let us know. Another thing, too, I did want to share with the residents is to remind the residents that they do have two bulky item pickup requests that they can make with Jilton, and that's free of charge. A lot of our residents don't know that, but they could call Jilton and schedule a bulky item pickup, free of charge, and they can leave it in their front, front yard over there on the curb and gutter. Jilton will tell you when to leave it out there. We don't want you out there leaving it for two, three, four, a month at a time. They will let you know when you could place it out there for pickup. Say, council, any questions?
Yes, Anthony. As it relates to, you know how a lot of these folks that are going to be doing underground utility work in our city, whether it be, you know, Frontier, PG&E, et cetera, you know, they come in to get some encroachment permits from your department, but if you want to talk a little bit about how we don't really have a lot of control over these entities, and we try to work with them to notify some of the business owners and neighbors, because they just go out there and then just start cutting the street and blocking the streets, and so if you want to talk a little bit about that and how we are working to try to, you know, curve some of those issues?
Yeah, we try to work closely with the different utility agencies out there. Some of them are a little harder to work with than others, like PG&E.
I didn't say the name, I thought I beat him up.
But these utility companies do have to pull an encroachment permit anytime they work within our right-of-ways in our streets. If they're going to be removing pavement, if they're going to be boring, if they're going to be pulling, they have to go to Public Works and pull a permit, an encroachment permit application, and that is worked on and overseen also by our Engineering Department as well. They work pretty close with Public Works and the utility agency, whoever it may be. And sometimes there's going to be a large project that's going to require traffic control. They're going to be stopping traffic, they're going to be one-lane closures or partial closures.
And tell them that it's not all-in-one location. They can be in multiple locations at once. So, for instance, here in front of City Hall, you know, they were really banging on, you know, on something that was, it was like if there was a little earthquake going on. So, you know, and some of the property owners were, you know, like, "Well, what's going on?" So those are some of the things that we have to, you know, address as best as we can, but continue to share.
And like the city manager said, we are working closely with our representatives with the different utilities to develop a relationship so we can call them. We've been really calling our PG&E rep a lot lately, just to notify them of our needs within the city, and when we do run into issues like traffic, unexpected closures, and so forth.
Thank you, Anthony.
So at this time, I will look to see if there's any questions, if there's anyone on the phone. Hearing and, coming to the chambers, any questions in the chamber? Seeing and, bringing it back to the dais, and then at this time?
Yes.
Chief?
Before I move on, Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Public Works?
Yes, go ahead.
So, one thing that pops up in my mind, residents ask this at times, and I've gotten this question since the notice came out in the mail as it pertains to water conservation. When we look at how much water is being used in the city of Livingston, just as a whole, industry uses well over half of the city's water, namely Foster Farms. And so the first question I get is, "Hey, we're asking people to use less water. Are we asking our industries to use less water?" And so my question to staff is, what steps are we taking? Have we taken? Can we take to ensure that our industry usage of water is also within the right lines, that we're not just putting the burden on our residents?
Great question from the public, and thank you for relay, Mr. Paul. As a matter of fact, we work with our biggest user, and you outlined Foster Farms. Over the years, we've worked with them on a number of different fronts, where they actually do, well, first of all, they buy, they continuously buy equipment that uses less water, then they actually do a lot of reuse of their water, and then they actually recycle a lot of their water. And there's been times where we've been trying to work with Caltrans to actually use water that Foster Farms is recycling, that they don't have necessarily a use for, that they're going to perk in the ground, to try to get Caltrans to irrigate all of the 99 corridor versus using our potable water to do that. We weren't successful, but that doesn't mean that we're going to give up. You know, that was a few years ago, but we're going to continue to do that. And then, in addition to that, Foster Farms, of course, as well as Fereneus, when Fereneus was here, they would rather pay less for, you know, water, it's all determined on the amount of water that they use. So we always look at different opportunities to reuse, recycle, and reduce the amount of potable water use, so that that way we can not put too much pressure on our infrastructure. And we also have applied for grants to, like, the Bureau of Reclamation, Department of Water Resources, in different departments, to, like, change toilets, showerheads, there's different programs, you know, and some of these come and go, but when we see those, we try to, you know, go after those fundings. And the other one is, like Anthony mentioned, talking to the residents, because they don't know, you know, how, maybe how to set, they got a new homeowner, they don't know how to set their sprinklers, or their sprinklers are now damaged, and the majority of the spray is going somewhere else rather than the grass, or maybe they don't know that they need to schedule it for, you know, short intervals over the course of several hours versus, you know, just a 15-minute flush. So it's, we know this is a continuous effort, and that's why we'd like to educate the public before we do any citations, before we do any of those things, and really, and we do it in different fashions. We, sometimes we go to the school district, and we give them, we give the school district to the kids, because a lot of times, the parents, they don't even open their utility bill, they just pay the bill, and they don't see what's inside, they don't see the Facebook posts or our meetings. So we try to, you know, hit all sites.
Definitely, and there's no doubt that, public or industry, we could all conserve water in our own ways. One more follow-up question, and, Mr. Mayor, as you haven't had as much time to do this, just given that you just got back on a few months ago, have we had conversations related to water conservation with the new ownership at Foster Farms? Because I know the Fosters, there was a decent working relationship there with the city, but Anthony, whether that's on your side, Mr. Mayor, even potentially your side, have there been any staff conversations with them since they've gotten on about that?
Yeah, I could add a little bit there. Engineering, Mario and I did have a conversation with some of the new owners of Foster Farms, the Environmental Department, just Environmental Engineering. One of the statements I did make... One of the statements I did make and I will be meeting with our contact person there who's an environmental engineer, just to go over and discuss and ensure that they're still applying their conservation methods and making sure they're still in effect. Hopefully in about a month, a little less than a month, I'll be able to make a site visit there as well. Going to invite the city manager and if we could invite any other staff, council, we'll invite council as well if we can.
Thanks for being on that. No further questions.
I have one, I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
And I talked to Anthony about it earlier. Since Foster Farms lost that 2020 lawsuit on their use of water, they have agreed to change how they're doing stuff. So I just want to make sure our records of what has been going through the city meter now within, and that was only bad fire because I didn't get to research how they worded their, that they lost that lawsuit. But is there a timeframe that they have to change some of this? When, how can we monitor when the city's going to, are they actually doing what they're supposed, that they said they did in the lawsuit? And can we track our city meter water going down and prove that they're doing something? That's just what I want to think. And then I want to thank Anthony for that flyer, it was very nice and the city manager listening to me about it. Personally, I think the flyer is a great idea, but until we change the code and put a bite to it, I think 50, probably 50% of the people could care less. Because we've been talking water conservation for 15 years since I've been here, basically. And it got worse, you know, and then gets better, gets worse, some years are good, some years are bad. But if we don't put a bite on it, I don't think they'll comply. That's just my own opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, really quickly.
Yes, go ahead.
I want to get on this now. Mr. Wallace makes a great point about enforcement. I agree. Policy means nothing without enforcement. You know, it's funny, we've talked about this before, I can already think of at least a couple households that are most definitely going over their water usage. But to the Foster Farms point about this lawsuit and just enforcement as a whole, does the city, to what extent does the city have enforcement authority over industry? And this might have been a good Roy question, but obviously he's not here tonight. If we can't answer that now, I would like to explore that. Because like Mr. Wallace said, you know, everybody's bound to the law. If our residents are going to be bound to it, the industry should also be bound to it. And I'd be curious to know what our potential enforcement looks like over them.
All right, thank you, council. Anything else? All right, so next we have the chief and he has, I think he has a speech or report for two hours. Let's keep it short.
I'm Chief Rick Schiff. I'm now on my, I think, eighth month of service here. I want to say this is a great honor to be able to speak before the council. And also, it's an exciting time to be in public service and law enforcement. So whatever you may have heard about police work, it is very exciting for us and there are a lot of new technological opportunities opening up for us, grants opening up for us. And I think you'll find that the members of the Livingston Police Department are pretty excited. I'd like to start off with saying that one of the first things that we did was a self-audit of all of our policies and procedures, literally all of them. And we did find waste. We found things that had been done for no particular reason or no one could even remember why they were being done. We've changed and altered those policies. We've adjusted to a better future, less waste, more reallocation of things that we do need to do, both in terms of resources and time. We've reached out to the community and tried to identify both through your constituents and from you as their representatives and from them individually and the groups that we participate in, what is it they really want? What do they want to see from us? We listen to them, we go back. There are three sergeants, two corporals, lieutenant and a chief, so it's not hard for us to have a staff meeting. We talk about what does the elephant look like, where, how do we move forward? And how we're going to implement best practices and policies and procedures. It is really an evolving profession at this point and a lot of changes have come through after the last five years. Different perspective on policing, not all of which we agree with, but a great deal of it really is groundbreaking. It's providing direction and an understanding of how to communicate. And hopefully we're doing as good a job as we can and we will always strive to do better. One example is that we were towing vehicles that we should not have been towing and no one could even remember why we were doing it, but it was a great cost to the city. We've stopped that, we've implemented a new policy that's more appropriate to what the evidentiary code and what's required of us as law enforcement. I also want to reaffirm the commitment that you've heard from just about everybody here. Livingston Police Department works very closely with every staff member here, every manager, finance all the way to human resources. I'm at her door every day. Anthony and I are inseparable. We're out every day looking at signs, trying to figure out parking situations, what can we do to make the streets safer. Literally Mario, everyone here, Miguel, we work very closely together and that is a great experience for me. I know that I can knock on their door and I will get the answer and get sent off to get the job done. Some of the things that we've been working on, our primary goal right now is to get to full staffing. And I don't know that you're aware of this, but we have not been at full staffing as a police department in many years. We are now at full staffing, which is 19 people, including the chief, all sworn officers, not including our dispatchers and our civilian staff. We're still short at least one dispatcher. However, as good as that sounds, it takes us three to four months to train a police officer just to be able to work by themselves. So we won't really reap the benefit of that until we get to July. But in July, you will see more uniformed police officers spread throughout the city, which means better service, quicker service, more adherence to the law. There's nothing that replaces high visibility of uniformed police officers. In addition to that, we're sending two officers to motorcycle school, so you'll be seeing patrols on motorcycles by July and hopefully before that. One of the things that we've done is reach out to as many community-based organizations as we can, all of the schools. Now, we are at schools every day, not just with the school resource officer, but we try to deploy an officer every morning, every afternoon and throughout the day to be visible at our schools, just to have a visible presence. We get out, we read to the students, we do all kinds of programs with them, but we always maintain as high visible profile as we can with them. We are working to improve our community contact. We will never be perfect at it, but we reach out, we, our officers are learning to go to churches, talk to people about where are you on the Sundays, what events would you like us to come to? We try to get invited to as much as we can. We went to Yamato School Carnival a week ago with some of the council members here. It was an excellent time. We were able to inflate huge bounce house, get a lot of smiles on kids' faces and that's worth it. We did also co-sponsor with the opening of Ockidian Park, which was very gratifying. It was a great turnout, lots of kids and there's nothing like the smiling faces of kids when they're eating hot dogs. Part of the full staffing issue here is that at full staffing, we can afford to send officers to the training that they need and there's a great void in our training. Not that our officers are poor, they're good officers, but everything that we do as police officers involves perishable skills. If we don't train constantly, then we lose those perishable skills and you as the people we serve cannot afford that. I'd like to point out that Diego Castilla has helped us with our training facility, which we're renovating to make sure that it is standard and can help continue throughout the years, help our training and facilitate our training. We're working hard on applying for grants. We're looking for CBOs, community-based organizations that we can partnership. And one of the things that we identified early on that we've been working very hard on is mental health. I'm sure everyone here recognizes a huge void in mental health. It is recognized by all the school principals, all the churches. There is no day that goes by when we are not, as police officers, doing some form of psychotherapy in somebody's front yard, which is wholly inappropriate. We're trying to work with county health to come out and visit Livingston and respond to the people that we talk to regularly. That is a goal for us. It's a difficult hill to climb, but we're working it. And I think lastly, I'd like to point out the Explorer Scouts. I think everybody recognizes what a wonderful job they do, thousands of hours that they put out helping the community. But every time I get a phone call that asks me to help with Carnival, with a pancake breakfast, with anything, the officer that is in charge of them, they respond without complaint and they work faultlessly. And I just wanted to voice one more, I guess, compliment for them and the kind of service that we get from the youth, and that's what they are, the youth of the community.
Chief, if you can touch a little bit about our game plan for, you know, the Fourth of July and the famous cross streets and then just, and then finish that off with the traffic committee and, you know, how folks get onto that.
Absolutely. We have downscaled the Fourth of July this year, I think, but we are keenly aware as police department, as a city, as a city manager, that we face a great deal of challenge with respect to fireworks, not only the Fourth of July fireworks, but unlawful fireworks. There are a number of programs that we have underway. We will definitely provide educational information. We will try and be educational in terms of our enforcement, in terms of what the law is, but we will be very strict in terms of citations and enforcement for people that break the law. We cannot tolerate that. And it has gone on way too long in not just this city, but every city. Having said that, there's an excellent fireworks show. We know that thousands of people are going to show up. We are working with the Department of Public Works to try the ingress and egress, get the traffic in, get the traffic out, trying to, trying to think of a nice way of saying this, try to discourage people from showing up five minutes before the fireworks and blocking our cities. And we will actively be discouraging that with citations if that's necessary, but we're hopeful that it isn't. We're hopeful that we can just educate people and they will see us and know that they need to just keep moving. And the enforcement part of this, we have a number of things that we're working with outside agencies on in terms of just eliminating fireworks in the county, starting very soon. Having said that, the next issue is traffic. Now, there have been a number of, there've been two traffic fatalities, several serious traffic accidents. We recognize that traffic is a great concern of the city, of the residents. The city manager, Jose Ramirez, has put together a community, what do we call it ourselves, a traffic community, traffic calming committee, excuse me.
Traffic committee and you guys implement traffic calming measures?
Traffic committee that implements traffic calming measures so that people who have concerns in their neighborhood can come forward to the committee, submit their concerns and maybe even their suggestions and we will review them and through the city engineer, Department of Public Works, police department, city manager, and find the most appropriate way to deal with those concerns.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir.
So you already answered one of the questions that I had actually come in from some residents and this came up, you know, like within the last, a few times within the last six weeks as we are approaching Fourth of July, which you already covered. And then their main concern was illegal fireworks. So, but the other, the other, if you can expand a little bit on the TNR program, there's been some inquiries in consideration if, they wanted to know if there was a possibility to form a committee of volunteers to be able to assist, support or help you expand the current TNR program. And obviously, we're not the only city with unhoused pets, unhoused cats, especially, you know, with cats which they tend to reproduce pretty rapidly. And there's been a lot of concerns also on social media in regards to stray cats invading people's homes, front yards and peeing all over the place, you know, gardens and stuff like that, which is very valid. I mean, and, but I always encourage them to contact PD and get some information on what the programs that we currently have. But once specifically reached out to see how and if possible, they could form a committee of volunteers to assist with the TNR program, not only to actually, TNR actually catch them, take them into the vet and then bring them back and the whole process, but also to assist with the educational process in educating the community or their neighbors in regards to stray cats and how to best handle the situation.
Well, yes, sir. First off, to confirm, it's trap and release program, TNR. We have one officer, one animal control officer who's also part-time, our code abatement officer, whose sole job is to focus on those two issues and he does non-stop on the days that he is not in or in the evenings, then the officers take over that same responsibility and we follow the same protocols. So you do have 24-hour service on that. We run a number of programs which we put on our Facebook regularly. We do have a trap and release program. Unfortunately, as the mayor pointed out, some cats are smarter than others and we haven't quite figured out how to get them all. Otherwise, we would not have cats reproducing. And we have the same problem with small animals and dogs. We have a number of dogs. This last month, for instance, four dogs were seriously injured and this is not just, this is during the time when police officers responded and we take them to a vet and then the vet determines whether or not they're so severe they can be euthanized. But there's quite a bit of money that gets spent in our capturing these animals. We don't relocate them. If we capture a cat, it is trapped, then it is spayed or neutered, cats get, and then it is returned to the same location. We work with communities, so if somebody has a cat, they have a problem, we microchip for free. There's a number of services that we provide and whether it's the TNR program or any other program, you're always welcome to call the police station. We'll tell you everything we know and all of the free resources or services that you can go to, to get care for your animals. I'd like to finish up by saying, we are looking at grants now and trying to find grants. It's very difficult to find veterinarian clinics, it's impossible to find them at this point, that will come into town. So we have to go outside. We use a clinic, for instance, in Turlock, which is quite a bit of ways away for us. So we're looking at grants where we could bring somebody in, maybe three days a week for free services here in the city, maybe encourage people to bring in their animals. It's a little bit more convenient and reduce the numbers that way.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Excuse me, I don't want to sound harsh, but when we trap a cat and re-release it in the same area, it hasn't really solved the homeowner's complaint because that cat is still there and that cat is still crawling under the, under the car. It's on your, sitting on your hood when you come out of the house and it's peeing in your backyard, it's pooping everywhere. So it hasn't really resolved that issue. I mean, I understand the concept of trap and release, but is it really, really making a whole lot of difference out there or is there, we have to realize as society that maybe we need to offer other solutions?
If I recognize what you're saying.
And I'm trying to be polite because I know I'm going to get a lot of complaints tomorrow.
No, 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 no.
A lot of cat owners out there.
I would argue, and I think all of us recognize, that what we've been doing currently is ultimately not successful. We may be stemming the tide back, but we're not achieving the goals that we're looking for and we certainly need to review it. And I'm not saying that your suggestions and what you're inferring isn't something we should consider. It is true, we, at this point, we've released them. I can give you some insight as to why we do that and I'm not sure that it's the greatest explanation, but we don't know who the cats belong to. And ultimately, we're concerned that somebody's beloved animal we trapped and then we didn't return it. And I believe that was the thinking behind the TNR program is that you can't guarantee whose animal you trapped, at least in terms of cats. whose animal you trapped, at least in terms of cats. We could microchip, that's part of the whole point of microchipping, is so that we can know who belongs to what animal. Unfortunately, some people don't like to take responsibility for their animals.
You know, I have what I call the JCP crew out there. There's probably like a group of 10 cats, and I don't know if they've been trapped and all that stuff has been done, but no matter when you look at it, they probably got like five or six kittens running around with them, little ones. So obviously, you know, like, you know, I don't think that's really working. And when I suggested this to some, one of the neighbors, they were not happy with me, but I'd say, well, do you have a different solution? But they don't have a solution either. Everybody loves cats until they come into their yard.
Well, we have the same problem with small Chihuahuas. Roving packs of Chihuahuas, and I agree completely, and, you know, we laugh about it, but we're in police cars at night, we're dodging them. They're fearless. And that's kind of the last thing you really want to do in the middle of the night. So, no, I think you're absolutely right. I think that these are things that we need to address and put a lot more consideration into what is actually problem-solving.
This trap and release, and I understand the humanity of it and so forth, or you don't want to hurt someone's beloved pet, but is that a state requirement, or how does that come out? I know you're the expert, but how is the, no, no. And Mr. Mayor, I meant it in a fully respectful manner because I see your, your comments and everything regarding trap and release. I know you're really into it. So that's what I was saying, is that a city thing, or is that a state? I'm not sure how that is.
Well, I'm not so much of an expert, but, you know, but, you know, there's certain requirements whenever a, any animal gets trapped, it has, there has to be a waiting period, and it has to be announced and advertised, you know, we found this dog, this cat, and to provide an opportunity possibly for the owner to find it and so on, and then if not, then it gets, there's an option to be rehomed and so on. But, you know, to go back into the TNR topic, it's, it becomes more of a nuisance whenever a stray cat or a cat gets replaced somewhere else where it's not their home, it causes more trouble because it's invading somebody, some other cat's area. So they're just like invading, there's more fighting and so on. But, you know, I'm grateful that there has been something in place for the last four years because nothing had been done in the past, or at least very minimal. And that's what happens when nothing gets done in time, and that's why now we have an overpopulation. And with cats, if, just to give you an idea, or give people an idea, a pair of cats will normally could reproduce around a hun, I'm sorry, 82,000 times, or will create 82,000 kittens in seven years. And so if we at least, TNR, or trap and neuter, or spay and neuter a few cats a year, we're reducing that amount of additional cats out in the community. I mean, you know, and this is not only a Livingston problem, it's a county, it's a, you know, it's all over the place. But it's also, you know, ideally, if we had a county, you know, a county and other jurisdictions plan, that we could plan together, the county animal shelter could stop being a, a, a place of just input and output, input and output, you know? Yeah, just like having the revolving door effect. I think more needs to be done, but, you know, because we cannot count on what others are or others are or are not doing. But that is, I think it is something. I agree. I mean, I have a few cats at home, and I have neighbor cats that, I don't know whose cats they are, but, you know, they come and eat my food. I mean, not my food, my cat's food, you know? And, you know, so, and they come and pee in my backyard and, you know, just like everybody else, but until that gets fixed, you know, if they don't get trapped and spayed and neutered, you know, I mean, I, every three months, I see a whole bunch of kittens all over the neighborhood, you know, under people's cars. But, I mean, is there a solution? This is only one of many possible solutions, I think.
If I might add, one of the things I asked when I first came here and reviewed the process was, well, why aren't all the animals licensed? And the animal control officer said, well, we've run that program a number of times, but nobody wants to license their animal, no one wants to be held accountable for whatever their animal does. But that is certainly an area that we need to, I mean, that's what all cities do, is they license their animals so that we know whose animal actually belongs to somebody and whose doesn't. It's just kind of a little different in Livingston right now.
No, thank you, chief, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hope I didn't sound too harsh in my suggestion, but, you know, it's just, like everybody else, we get a lot of complaints.
And just FYI, I mean, there's other nonprofit organizations out there. I know, like, for instance, Livingston Lions donated a couple of thousand dollars about a year ago or so to a local, local group, you know, of neighbors, just to be able to help take care of the situation in their neighborhood. I mean, that's just how many cats they had. And if we can do that, you know, I mean, if we have more groups like that, you know, that could help that community take care of that situation, you know, every day, I see postings about some kittens, there's no mom, and so on, and, you know, there's not many people that have the time or the will or the, or the ability to go pick them up and, you know, take care of it and so on. But, you know, could we do better? I'm sure, you know, could we do more? Probably. And it's just a matter of having the, the people to be able to do it. So, and, you know, I think the idea of having a committee of volunteers is great, but there's more to it than just volunteering and then the liability and all of that that needs to be looked into. But, but I think I will welcome anybody out in the community to be able to reach out to, counsel to the city manager or to the PD, to be able to have those conversations about a committee of volunteers. Counsel, any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. May I?
Yes, go ahead.
Chief, you said in July you're going to be at full staff, basically. How many other officers did you hire?
We hired two officers. We believe that there'll be an opening, so we have a reserve that we think we're going to be able to move into a full-time job. We also have an officer that is on injury, so he's like, excuse me, limited duty, and we hope to have all of them functional and able to work by themselves by July.
Thank you. Second question, a lot of the community have approached me about officers not being seen. I'm glad what you said, that the community is going to see a lot more officers out in the community. That's very important, because I hear that complaint all the time. So, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm not going to get too deep into the feral cats issue. They invaded my house too, so you can guess where I stand on it. I'm open to, my bad, I'm open to any solutions that anybody has, even if they may be unpopular. I would just ask that staff don't feel afraid to bring them forward. I think we can at least have a discussion. Chief, one not-so-fun policy question for you that was brought to me by our trucking community. I asked them to be here tonight to say it in person. Clearly, they didn't show up, so I'm still going to ask on their behalf. There's a lot of folks that have requested that they be allowed to park in our Joseph Gallo Street area, near some of our fast food restaurants and some of those gas stations on the sidewalks at night in order to get a few hours of sleep because they're having difficulty parking at TA or not able to find truck parking also. Truck parking is not in high abundance. And so the request made is, hey, we don't have to be there all day. We understand that we can't be there during the day, but maybe during the night hours, 12:00 AM to 5:00 AM, 12:00 AM to 6:00 AM, somewhere within that window. Is it possible for the city to exempt their parking limitations in that area and allow us to park? And so it's a question I get constantly from those folks. We have staff here tonight that can share their thoughts on that, just preliminary thoughts on that matter, and what concerns exist, if any, and do you see this being something that's feasible?
Well, let me first address that I'm the enforcement arm of the Livingston Municipal Code. So I enforce it, and my officers enforce it as it's written, so that it's really for the council constituents to decide what they want in terms of parking, what they don't want. What I did do, because the day I got here, I started getting complaints about, why can't I park my truck here? How come I got a citation, the guy behind me didn't get a citation? All legitimate concerns, we explain them, but we put on the electronic marquee out here, essentially, if it's, if it doesn't say that you can park your big rig, then you can't. Some people were under the impression that, well, there should be a sign that tells me I can't park here. In Livingston, it's the other way. I'm sure what you meant was, can they park adjacent to the sidewalk? And, and that's really, those concerns are really up to you. I know the city planning will have a consideration on it, Miguel. We work together on those issues. I'm more than willing to do whatever I can to assist and render our opinion, at least, as to what the impact would be on the community and the neighborhood. One problem that I could see is that there are so many trucks that it's probably in our best interest for us to allocate some specific property, I would think, this is not my area of expertise, but some specific area that isn't right in the middle of a commute corridor, or a potential commute corridor, and I know there's a lot of building going around there. That might be, rezoning might be a consideration.
Miguel, if you might want to share with the public and council about a private group of individuals off of B Street that are looking at providing truck parking?
Yes, a couple of things. We do have an interest by an individual who owns property on B Street, south of the TA. He's interested in rezoning his property from commercial to industrial to allow a truck parking facility to be located there. That's next to the middle school, and there's some other properties that are commercial. He has submitted an application, he needs to revise it a little bit, he hasn't moved forward with that. On the matter that the police chief mentioned, when we talk about truck parking, you know, we look at the general plan, there's truck routes, identify where trucks are allowed to park, or travel, I should say. And then we talk about parking for commercial and industrial businesses. Ideally, in the zoning code, a business should be able to contain all their parking facility on-site. If they're a store or a business, they should have ample space on their property to provide parking. The exception is in the downtown areas. And so the question is, who is really needing the parking there? Is it the business because they want to develop further the land use that's on the site, make more efficient use, and kind of move the parking off-site, so they're kind of expanding the intensity of their land use? When it comes to the operational issues of trucking on, truck parking on the streets, some of the considerations I see is, when you have employees that are leaving a business site, and they're going through a driveway, you know, do they have the clear vision triangle to, you know, inch out into the street? Are they going to be in harm's way by kind of going out because they can't see the, making a right or left turn because the trucks are blocking the path of view? Usually, we ask for that area to be cleared. So we get into a lot of these safety issues, we get into issues of parity, you know, we say, one business can have truck parking, but the other one cannot. And we really need to do a comprehensive, look at this in the general plan, but also in the zoning code. Clearly, trucking is, is a way to move commerce, and it's needed in our community, a lot of folks are employed by it, but there's a lot of externalities that are associated with it. You know, when you have a lot of trucks that are traveling on roads that are not meant or designed to handle that load, they start to tear up the road, and, you know, that requires more expenditures from the city to repair, replace, and, you know, the street is not designed to handle the truck, we're kind of doing a disservice to the residents as well, because then we're going to have potholes and things of that nature. So there's lots of considerations, these are some of the items we're dialoguing on, deliberating.
Definitely. That's super helpful, which is why I wanted to ask the question here. In theory, we have legislative, you know, authority over the municipal code, but we're not just going to sit here. I'd hope we're not just going to sit here and do something without asking your opinion first. And so it's my responsibility and task on behalf of them, and also to ask you guys if you think it's even feasible. Maybe at some point down the line, it's worth exploring, even if it's a couple spots, if that's something we can do. But generally speaking, yeah, if there's legitimate traffic and safety concerns, I completely understand why that's not the route we'd want to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Just real quick, Miguel, I think you brought up a very good point, which I had made a note on previously, there haven't really seen a lot of trucks parked on the, in residential areas, and even though there might be just a, just a truck itself, just a tractor up on their driveway, still damages the streets because they're not adequately equipped to be able to handle that much weight all the time. And, and a lot of times, I didn't know this until I started asking questions, but I think I've been seeing less and less of the tractors being parked in driveways and stuff like that. Probably is because of enforcement or educational opportunities, like you mentioned before.
Yeah, one last comment regarding that is also, this also applies to, you know, our garbage trucks. You know, a lot back, I don't know if you remember, but back in the day, there was, there was a lot of hydraulic oil, and they had bigger, older trucks, and everywhere they, they stopped to pick up the actual garbage cans. That's where you saw the damage and so forth. So we're looking at all those aspects.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Question, chief. With dogs that are, because they're posted a lot, that you've got, found them and picked them up, and if they have the license or they're chipped, and you're able to identify the owner, and then a week later, you get the same one back again, is there a bite to that, to the owner? Or is it just, you pick them up and return them, and just like the water, a month later, they get the same dog back again? Is there, is that something that needs to be addressed also?
Yes, there are, there are codes that we could use for enforcement to cite. I would suggest that it is in our best interest to encourage people to license their dogs so that we can return them home. And we, at this point, given the sheer lack of people who do that, I don't see us penalizing anybody who actually does license their dog. I would be more than happy to bring their dog home to them and caution them to give better care. It may seem a little more kinder or gentler, but there are so many dogs that are not licensed. We're shocked when we find one that is.
Okay.
At some point, when all the dogs are licensed, and there's one that's a perpetual runaway, we will start doing what is necessary to encourage people to fence in their dogs, but we're not even close to that.
Okay. Thank you on that, chief. And then Miguel, on that property on B Street, assuming that is the same one that was parking trucks there earlier, and we had to put a stop to it because it was not licensed?
Yes, that's correct. That property went through code enforcement because they were parking their trucks, that was unpermitted. You know, the option he had was to consider rezoning, and that's what he's pursuing. Yes, that's the same property.
Thank you.
Chief, real quick, would there be an opportunity to, so that a committee might consider or think about, or would be more encouraged to license their dogs if, if there was like a free day to come and license your dogs, and then hopefully, we can have a better response that way?
I, I think anything we do has got to be a step in the right direction. We have free days for, for instance, microchipping them, certainly. We're looking at a grant so that we can present an entire package to people, say, look, there's no expense to you whatsoever. We'll spay, neuter. We'll spay, neuter, license your dog, chip your dog, and then we're going to start enforcement after we provide this education and these free services. That's what we're envisioning. And I think we'll get there. I think we'll get there pretty soon.
All right, thank you. One more. Wanted to make sure I got to this, got lost in my notes. We talked about the traffic committee. This is currently comprised of staff, correct? The committee?
Yes.
Yes, and so my question? And one member of the public? And so, given that the committee does not meet publicly or agendize the way we do, how would the public engage with the committee? Like, is there a dedicated forum for that? Is it just a matter of reaching out to you or the city manager? What would that look like?
Well, the, the, the traffic committee, of course, is certainly open to anybody who, who would like to, who has an issue, whether it's any part of the community. And, and at any time, the structure can certainly be changed and more, you know, at-large folks from the community can be, become representatives on that. As a matter of fact, the chief is working on a, you know, bringing to council, you know, to, because it, because it's been a while since, since the traffic committee has been meeting in the past. And so whoever's interested in the structure and all that, we can start looking at all that. But, but to answer your question, it, the, the, all mechanisms, whether it be through council, through the city manager's office, or through any of the departments, that information is then shared with the traffic committee. And then they make contact with those people. And then there's certain protocols that are followed.
Definitely. And would that only be related to traffic calming or could that include street lighting as well?
When we, when we say traffic committee, it's anything and everything that has to do with traffic. And traffic calming is, there's a plan that we came up with and that's, that's a living document and it gets changed continuously. And so that, the traffic calming plan is a part of the traffic committee. So, but traffic is everything. This traffic committee covers everything related to traffic.
So yes, it does cover street lighting? Okay, thank you.
All right, so at this time, I will go out for a public comment. Is there any questions on the phone? Here and now, coming back to the chamber, any questions in the chamber? Seeing now, closing at eight oh nine, well, not closing it, but just moving on.
All right.
Who's next?
Yeah, RC, I'm sure you can give a quick little update, you know? But I know you have, you know, you do a lot, but you can. Take it off if you need to.
Okay, I think I'm on. So RC Cruz, HR Coordinator. Thank you, council and members of the public. So I have responsibility for anything that falls under the HR umbrella, which is a lot. I'm a staff of one, full-time. And under my responsibility, I do work collaboratively with everyone here on this table, which I'm very appreciated of. Because I would not be able to do that without their help and support. So thank you, staff and colleagues. So under the HR umbrella, we have, you know, responsibility for the recruitment cycle that englob, that encompasses everything from the advertisement to the onboarding. In between that, there's a lot of steps and coordination with department heads and whether that be seeking a panel for the interview process, coordinating pre-employment testing, which includes life scans with our PD staff. It includes also handling the, you know, physicals. And then for our public safety positions, it requires psych evaluations and coordinating that with the appropriate staff. Additionally, more in-depth background checks for our public safety positions. As well, I have oversight in coordinating the citywide training programs to include AB 1825. So, you know, if you didn't do your training, you probably got an email from me. So make sure, you know, everybody always has to stay on top of that. We have to self-certify to the Central San Joaquin Valley Risk Management Association, which is our pooling program. And we're required to do that in order to ensure compliance with them. In addition to the AB 1825 training, we also have trainings such as Farcliff Training, which is required under OSHA, heat illness training. And then most recently, through our Employee Assistance Program, we schedule leadership training. So there's always ongoing training for us and other staff. So that, that's another avenue that I help the city with. Additionally, what comes through my desk is also any property or liability claims that the city receives. I route those to our third-party claims administrator and work, you know, conjunction with them. And then bringing those back to council in a timely manner, having them reviewed and discussed for, you know, decision-making. Working with the city attorney's office on any litigation claims as they come in and are open. And then I collaborate really closely with Happy and team. On the finance side, one of my areas of responsibility is for the budget preparation to cost out the personnel costs. So working closely again with, with Happy and the finance team in doing that. And then working with city manager's office on labor negotiations. We have five bargaining groups. And just most recently, we initiated our negotiations. Our five MOUs are set to expire June 30th of this year. So we've met with three out of the five bargaining groups already. We've received initial proposals. We'll be bringing those back with city manager to present to council. And I'll be working again through this process with Happy on costing out those proposals. So that's, I would say that the labor negotiations is probably the highlight. I mean, we, we're hopeful that we're going to be able to solidify a three-year agreement with all five bargaining groups. So that's a little bit about what's happening in my HR role. Any questions?
All right, council, are there any questions for RC? At this time, I will go out for public, yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to make this a little more quantitative for people to understand. For one dispatcher, we went through 40 candidates. For three police officers, we went through 50 candidates. That would not have been possible had we not had RC supporting us and carrying us through the process. She, from start to finish, she guides us, provides the raiders, provides the environment that, that gets them through the various requirements, especially for dispatchers and for officers.
Thank you for that additional information. So if you guys have candy or, just make sure you take her some candy and keep her happy.
I'll take all the chocolates.
All right, so at this time, I will go out for, see if there's any questions on the phone? Anyone on the phone? All right, here and now, any questions here in the chamber? Bringing it back to the dais, council, anything else? Any questions? Yes, thank you.
Well, then we'll move over to finance, so Happy, and then we'll, we'll end up with leisure studies.
Good evening, council. Happy Baines, representing the finance department. Our primary responsibilities is to ensure the financial stability and transparency of the city. We are committed to managing public funds effectively and efficiently to support the mission and strategic goals of our organization. A few of our key responsibilities in the finance department include budget management, developing, implementing, and monitoring the annual budget to align financial resources with strategic priorities. Financial reporting, providing accurate and timely financial statements, reports, and forecasts to support informed decision-making by the council. Revenue management, overseeing the collection, allocation, and management of revenue to maintain financial health. Expenditure oversight, monitoring spending to ensure compliance with policies, regulations, and budgetary limits. So on the expenditure oversight, we also working on, I guess, one of the big projects that we're working on right now is the budget, which should be coming to council within the next few council meetings. We also work on a financial analysis, conducting financial analysis to assess risks, identify opportunity, and recommend strategies and financial sustainability. Audit compliance, ensuring adherence to accounting standards, legal requirements, and internal controls. And we are dedicated to providing and maintaining transparency, accountability, and integrity in all financial operations. So that's pretty much the finance department in a nutshell.
And, and Happy, and you have a copy of the draft budget for this that you're going to pass out to the council?
Yes, I do, yes.
Council, any specific questions for finance department?
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Happy, I've done budgets for, in the last 27 years as a district manager for a business. Do you give, does payroll fall under each department's head? You tell them to increase like 5% every year? Or the department heads don't do the payroll? Is how, I'm just trying to get it because my managers, when we gave them a budget, we told them, this is what you had last year, you're going to increase payroll 5%. You're going to reduce this 2%. Supplies, merchandise, and all that had a percentage that we directed to them. So I know that business, private business versus city businesses do. I'm just trying to get a feel, what directions come from you to the department heads? How much freedom do they have or what input do you give them? Payroll, supplies, merchandise? Is there a percentage you have in mind that you give to them or they're on their own?
No. So from the finance department, we don't, we only control the personnel, personnel side. Basically salaries, FICA, Medicare, basically the personnel portion of the budget. The department heads themselves are responsible for the maintenance and operations of their budget. So meaning their special projects, meaning their training, basically all the line items that follow maintenance operations, they are responsible for that. So there is no actual step one, step two that we give them that they got to follow. It's basically either they can go over, as you mentioned, three-year, 3%, 5% increase from previous year's budget. Or this is where finance will step in and say, a department budgeted $80,000 one year and for the last three years, their actuals have been $2,000, $4,000, $7,000. I'm not going to let them budget $80,000, keep budgeting $80,000 because they're not spending the $80,000. So that's where the finance department will come in and work with them on that.
And, and then the finance and the, and the city manager's office, and then as well as the council, that's where we have a number of budget workshops. So that if there's, you know, depending on what the, the overall revenue versus expenditures is going to look like, and that's why we also have a mid-year budget because things do change, there might be line items in that budget that get eliminated even though they were initially budgeted. Or in terms of priorities and policies of the council, you know, they might add those, but they get wiped out even before it's even makes its way into the budget itself. And then from there, they can still be eliminated here at the dais.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to go out for a public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone? Here and now, coming back to the chamber, any public comment in the chamber? Seeing now, bringing it back to the dais. Council, anything else? All right, moving on. Thank you.
And so in the very near future, we're going to be having our first budget workshop, which is slated for when, Happy?
First meeting of June.
Okay, first meeting in June. All right, so I like to call it leisure, but recreation. We left you for, yeah, hit a home run here.
Good evening, everyone. Talking about my department, I thought it would be, give you some fun facts. In, in a year's time, our department enrolls about 2,200 children in all of our programs. Now, that's not counting a mom and a dad and siblings, but we have, we provide a lot of fun things for the kids in our community. Between our, we have youth sports, which you guys are all familiar with. Our contract classes, which is the classes where if you have a talent and you would like to teach it, then we help you be successful in that and getting members. This year, our swim team is coming back. We are almost at 50 participants, which is wonderful, and we'll be competing throughout Merced County because we have joined the Merced County Swim Association, put on through the county. And then, of course, our swim lessons, last year, we gave in excess of 500 swim lessons. So we do, for a small little town, we offer a lot of activities. I would say the areas that we're lacking is for our teenagers and our senior citizens. But in light of getting our new rec plex, we will have the ability, hopefully, to provide different activities for them. We also do, of course, many special events such as the Color Run Sweet Potato Festival. This year, the July Festival, our Christmas Parade, our Court of Trees, and our Fall Street Fair. One of the projects that we are working on is our rec plex, of which we gained a grant from Prop 68. And we are hitting a few little hurdles, which I will be talking about in our June, early June meeting, to give you an update on it. We do, we are also have California Consulting that will, will be helping us find funding and a strategy to get the money to get this rec plex done. I have a large amount of faith to believe that it is going to happen. And so we're just working on it. And now that Jose is back and is familiar with it, he's going to help us write, Jose.
Yes, Jackie. We, we got a lot to cover. We basically have two years because, what's the date, Happy, that it has to be, we have to have the doors open?
December of 2027.
Okay, so, so that's, that's where a lot of, it's, it's going to require a team effort. You know, Jabji talked about, you know, okay, you know, how can we, you know, help and assist here? So there, I mean, the fact that we already have some funding and we got a lot of things moving and we've got a lot of community support, we're going to look at in-kind, we're going to look at, you know, federal money if, if there's any left, you know, state funding, foundations. So, you know, I'm, I'm reaching out to different organizations. But the core of the, of the actual initial Prop 68 grant has to be done by that date that you mentioned.
Correct. So I did want to let everyone know that that project is on our website under the Recreation Department. It's listed as Prop 68. And as I get new information, I try to, we haven't had an update on there since we had the staff or the architect and the project manager come. And that actual meeting is on the website for those that would like to be, you know, updated as to where we're at. Right now, we're just looking at trying to figure out how we're going to fund the project and then make a plan on how we're going to do that. So the website is really, I want to just reiterate to the community, if you want to register, if you want to know what's going on, go to thecityoflivingston.org. Everything that you need to know is on there, including my email, my other half of my department's email. And, you know, if you don't see it on there, we'll help you find the answer to things. And with that, I'm trying to think on what else I wrote down that folks may want to know, other than we have online registration now and the community has embraced that. It's really wonderful because it helps us to not have to do things twice. So instead of having all the paper that we've had in the past, people are registering online and we can just merge those into reports to know how many shirts, how many kids in this division, who the coaches are, their background management. kids in this division, who the coaches are, their background management, all of that is done through this program. So, I'm very grateful that you guys passed in the last budget, that I could get that, because we are using it. And the last, and cherry on the top, you know, one of the things that we want to do is see kids stay busy, whether it's when, in our programs, whether it's the support of after-school programs, whether it is through the travel leagues. And one of the things that has happened, you know, soccer is super popular in our community, and those of you that have heard of California Surf, I haven't, but the people that are soccer people are real excited, they have chosen Livingston to have a branch of their programming here, and they don't charge the kids to be able, they have to try out, and they don't charge them, but there are other ways that the parents have to become engaged. But it's really an honor, and it's a great thing, that we can say Little Livingston is known for, you know, some of the best soccer players in the state of California. So, anyway, I just, they'll probably come at some point and share with you guys as to what's going on, but I'm really proud of our community, and, you know, especially how the parents step in, and they help, and they take part, and they are concerned about what is happening with their children, and, and they want to know how they can help. So, I'm proud of them, and you guys should be too. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Council, any questions at this time?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
A quick one, Jackie. I want to thank you for everything. I want to apologize, I don't know how we competed with the music in the park on your opening day. I don't know how we let that happen, because I got here about 30 minutes early to just think about what the questions and everything I had, and there were already over 40 people in the park. So, I think us as a council, somehow, we didn't catch that, and it goes back to something I asked last year, Councilman Lupo's asked for it. We don't got a handle on what everybody's doing on the same day. We're competing with ourselves. Now, we split, where'd everybody go? They're up there with you. So, either they don't care what's going on with the city, or they were more impressed with going to your music in the park. But we just got to watch the days, I think, what we schedule, can't be in competition with something else that the city is, has going on. And it just, it's like, wait a minute, and I bet with myself and told my wife, if we had 20 people here, I'd be impressed. Well, I'm not, because now they're all up there. So, but I want to thank you for all your hard work you're doing with Parks and Rec. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, council. Anything else at this time?
Yeah, a quick comment. Thanks again. We do do a lot with a little, which is always really impressive to see. I've heard rumblings on 4th of July of a dunk tank for a dunk a council member. I feel like it would be a great way to raise revenue, maybe even if you threw old council members in as well, if they're willing to participate. And so, curious to know if, if that is a possibility on 4th of July.
We actually thought about pie throwing. It's a little cheaper and more accurate.
I mean, if we, if we really want to make money for the RecPlex...
Are you volunteering to have the pies thrown at you and be dunked?
If everybody else is...
There's a lot of anger out there sometimes towards council, you know?
If everybody else is down, I'm down.
Don't you guys have the motto, all for one and one for all?
Yeah, if we all go, we all go.
Except when they're throwing pies at us.
Great idea.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to thank everyone tonight for showing up, explaining everything that they do. It's very important to this city. Thank you, Diego and your wife, for coming. Very important, but I agree, we have to watch the scheduling, so thank you very much, guys.
So, at, at this time, I will go out for public to see if there's any questions on the phone. Here and now, coming back to the chamber, any questions, comments in the chamber? Seeing none, bringing it back to our dais.
Yeah, I just want to say that I always am very proud and appreciative of all the hard work that our staff does at different departments. If I had to pick one department or another, I couldn't do it. Everybody's got their strengths. It's the folks sitting here that making the city look good and making the five of us look good. We do very little compared to what you folks do, so it is deeply appreciated. Thank you all.
So, I do want, yes, Mr. Wallace?
Yeah, one more question, Jackie. I'm sorry, I forgot it in my notes. Raising money for the RecPlex, do you have a system in place that an average citizen, if they donate $200, they get their gold star or silver star or something that will be posted, Rick? If you give $500, you get a little bigger? Do you, I, I've seen those in hospitals and other facilities, they have people divided by gay, what? Do we have anything in place like that right now, or can we do it?
So, if residents can donate something, it sure makes an investment into the community. I would love to work on something like that, and it's, it certainly is a great possibility.
I'm willing to help you, anything you need on that, to get it going.
Thank you, Bob.
Well, thank you, and, you know, it's, I've been, in the last few years that I've been here, I've been learning, learning a lot about all the different departments, you know, prior to me being elected. I, I knew more about recreation, or at least kind of, I had more contact with people in recreation. I've been learning a lot through the different departments and the times of being here, you know, PD, Polyworks, engineering, building, a little bit of HR, you know, I, I try not to go in there as much, you know, because it's, it's, you know, but she always, she does have some candy there sometimes when I go there, building and, and so on. So, I'm, I'm really grateful to be able to be given the opportunity to learn about the different departments, and, and for you guys to be here. And, and then also, just, just to end, to end, going back to, it's very hard to the calendar of dates. You know, for a long time before I sat here, I, I realized, I realized that this little city does a lot. There's always something going on almost every day in the city, whether it's at one school, the other school, at the park, or Memorial, you know, with recreation, or there's always something going on in this little city, you know, and I know that Jackie has worked for many years to have the community calendar as, as accurate as possible, and, but there's always things coming up very last minute, you know, but we do, we are going to get to have things going on on the same day, and, and that's a good thing sometimes, because it's, that means there's a lot of activity going on, you know, but yes, I agree, we, we, you know, we need to be more mindful, but it's going to be impossible to be mindful every single time. So, just, I just wanted to throw that out there, because that is something that I've seen and I noticed from a long time ago, and that is something that I, that I always mention to other people from other communities, that this little town is always very active. And it's always very active, because the community is involved, because the parents are involved, and, and it's good. You know, the more, the more activities that we have around the community, then the less need that we will have, a need for additional law enforcement. Not that I don't want to grow the department, but, you know, I'd rather invest it in, in the youth and different programs in the community, and work alongside with all the different departments. So, is there anything else anybody wants to add before we close this town hall meeting? No? All right, well, thank you, everyone, and we tried to keep it as short as possible, but I, I think we just went over about 60 minutes. No problem. Thank you, and good night, everyone.